There you go.
Good evening. This is the December 20th, 2016 school committee meeting. And unfortunately, not being familiar with this room, we neglected, we thought we were recording this meeting all along and we realized about midway through here that we did not have the cameras rolling. So we apologize for that. We're just going to recap a couple of key important things that we think are important for people to be aware of, and then we'll continue and proceed with our meeting. There's one topic that came up during public speak, and that was with regard to a public statement regarding the legalization of marijuana. The East Hampton School Committee has had some concerns about the effect on our young people in our city, the passing of legalization of marijuana and how that could affect the young people in our city. And as a result, we've drafted a letter that we're going to share with the City Council tomorrow evening. That would be Wednesday at 6:00 PM during their public speak portion of that meeting. And we're going to read our letter and turn it over to them for their consideration. And Chuck McCullough is here, and he notified us that they plan to do the same, that they have similar concerns, and they've also written a letter, and we'll be sharing that tomorrow evening as well, and potentially also another group of parents. We're not 100% sure about that.
Chuck's letter was from Williston.
And Chuck's letter, I'm sorry, it's from Williston, representing the Williston community. So, in other information that's really, I think we feel important to share publicly, we just, the committee has discussed previously and decided that it may be very, it would be very helpful to reaffirm and share our district's commitment to provide a respectful, safe and inclusive environment for all. And with that in mind, we prepared a statement that we wanted to share publicly, and I had asked Marissa if she would be willing to read that statement for everyone. So, Marissa, will you read it again?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
So this statement is our reaffirmation of values and vision for East Hampton Public Schools. The East Hampton School Committee has been made aware of concerns at local, state, and national levels about the effects of the unusually divisive election on school climate. We would like to take this occasion to continue to promote the values of our district. As a committee, we reaffirm our district's longstanding commitment to welcome, protect, and nurture all students, and we reject all forms of discrimination, bigotry, or bullying toward any person based upon race, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, disability, citizenship, political views, socioeconomic status, veteran status, or immigration status. We take seriously our profound responsibility to offer a safe and inclusive environment for students and families of all identities and experiences. We are proud of the respectful learning communities that exist in our schools, and we continue to expect that all members of the school community treat each other with civility, compassion, and respect for differences. We remain committed to our mission to encourage students to grow in mind and character so they may fully meet academic, social, and civic expectations as educated, respectful, and justice-minded citizens. For any member of our community who may have questions or concerns, we, your teachers, principals, superintendent, and school committee are ready to help.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we just need, we don't need to vote to approve, but we need to acknowledge this receipt of the works, minutes from our work session on December 15th, that they have been submitted, and is everyone in agreement that they reflect our meeting?
Yes.
Accurately and adequately. Okay, very good. Thank you. Superintendent Faunceby, you have a report for us.
Yes, I do. Our Director of Curriculum, Julianne Levin, is with us this evening. And I know the school committee had requested earlier in the fall when we did a preliminary presentation on our data from our PARC assessments, that we, that you would like to see a more comprehensive presentation at a later date. So Julianne is ready to do that for us this evening, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to her.
Thank you. And so this is a PowerPoint presentation that I prepared for the upstairs room, but we're going to look at it on paper instead, which will also be just fine. Yeah, probably here, actually. Yes, that's a good point. All right. So there's a lot of information on the slides, but I'm just going to walk you through the conclusions that we've come to as a district in terms of what we're really proud of, and also what we still see as our challenges that we're, that we're seeking to improve upon. So just as a starter, I thought I'd give you a refresher, or maybe an introduction into the Massachusetts Accountability System. It has a lot of ins and outs, and it's very interesting. It's, it's got a great intention, and unfortunately, there are some smaller school districts that, that don't see the benefits of its intentions as well as the larger school districts, which is what it's really designed for. And so there are some, there's some pieces of this that where we'll see, this is why it doesn't as well adapt to East Hampton as a smaller district, but works really well for Worcester and Boston Public. So, we'll go through that as we go through the, the slides. So the first slide, the purpose of the Massachusetts Accountability System. In 2011, with the approval of the new Massachusetts Frameworks in English Language Arts and Mathematics, we also had a new accountability system that was implemented. And that accountability system set as a goal for all school districts in the Commonwealth, that we would reduce our proficiency gaps by half by 2017. So starting with our 2011 accountability, we were supposed to, from 2011 to 2017, cut our proficiency gap in half. All, all school districts, that's true for. That was going to be measured in two ways. The first way is around student growth. So no matter how low your students are performing, you want to see your students grow, and you get a certain amount of points for watching that student grow. The other way is in student, I'm sorry, school percentiles. So we have the growth measure, achievement and growth measure, and then we have the percentile measure. And the percentile measure measures each school against like schools in the Commonwealth. So our schools get measured against schools not like the Worcester and Boston Public schools, but a lot of other schools in this area, for example. Our elementary schools, if you go into the school and district profiles on the DUSI website, which is where all of the raw data is housed, if anyone is interested in looking at it, it's fascinating, but you can go ahead and look at all of the raw numbers, if you'd like, on the school and district profiles. And in there, there's a tool that shows, it's called the DART Analysis Tool. In there, there's a tool that shows which schools we are compared with when they look at our school percentiles. So all of that data is there. I'm just giving you some, some quick bites of it, okay?
Which are the four or five schools that were most often compared?
In this area, it's, it's the ones right around us. So Northampton, Amherst, Hampshire Regional, Gateway, it's like, it's everything kind of right around us. We're fairly typical in this area for the other schools in our area that are also typically sized. Grade span is another piece that they, that they compare us by. So for instance, like, in this district, our middle school has sort of an unusual grade span, and so we're, that's a one that doesn't get compared as easily to the other schools in this area, which is interesting. But our high school, for instance, is compared very easily to Northampton High School. That's, that's one that we get compared to. So those are the two things that we're compared by. Our PPI, which is our Progress and Performance Index, which is that student growth and achievement piece, and then the school percentiles. There was one change in the data this year, and that was the inclusion of a new subgroup that the Commonwealth is reporting on called the High Needs Subgroup. And the High Needs Subgroup includes economically disadvantaged students, which is what we used to call our pre-reduced lunch students, but they are now referred to as economically disadvantaged, and it's a slightly different formula than pre-reduced lunch. Our students with disabilities and our current and former English language learners, they're all grouped together in a High Needs Subgroup, so that where school districts don't have enough students to make a subgroup statistically significant. So for instance, we as a district don't have a lot of current and former English language learners. So in some of our smaller schools, we don't get data on how those students have done. But when combined with students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students, that subgroup becomes large enough to be statistically significant, unless we do get data from it. So it actually helps out the smaller districts in terms of getting data for students that we really should be targeting for additional interventions.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So the economically disadvantaged students, I'm just wondering, that group that's now identified by a specific formula, would that represent a smaller portion of the students that are eligible for pre-reduced lunch? Would it be a small, is it a more defined group, or is it a broader group?
Yeah, it's actually a broader group. It's a slightly broader group. It's, it's slight for our district. In other distri-, oh, sorry. In other districts, they did see a change in how many students it included, but always, always broader, trying to, trying to give assistance to more children, not fewer.
Okay.
All right. So the next slide, our district accountability and assistance levels. As a district, we're classified as Level 3. What that means is that because the state wants to have a specific spotlight on where school districts need intervention, they always take the classification of the lowest performing school in the district. So in this case, our three elementary schools and our high school are all Level 1, which we should be extremely proud of. Our middle school, we are, we still have some challenges there, and I'm going to go into some of the reasons why. One very small piece is the grade span issue. So we have an unusual grade span in our middle school, which really does us, does us a deficit on our accountability level, which is unfortunate. So our middle school is our Level 3 school, and that's our targeted assistance school in terms of our accountability. But as a district, we are classified as Level 3 to make sure that we do get that assistance from the state for, in this case, our middle school. The next slide, the first-
Actually, could I just-
Oh, absolutely.
Because I'd love to know what extra assistance we get from the state on the level.
Yes.
No, actually, my, my question was just, I just think it's important because of the way information is reported, and I know that with the recording tonight, this may not get out as clearly, but a district that had five schools, as we did, that all were Level 2 would be rated better-
Correct.
-than we are.
Yes.
And, and I don't know whether that's true or not. I haven't done the research recently. I'd be curious to see whether that was true, but the, the mechanism of essentially tagging a school district that has multiple schools with one school, which may be an outlier for reasons that we can explain, and even within that school, may be tagged at that level because of an additional outlier-
Correct.
-to color the whole district. And I'm surprised that there's not more objection to this. I mean, technically, we're a 1.4 level school, right? If you add up the numbers and divide by five, we're, we're 1.4. Yet another school district that was across the board, twos-
Yes.
-would be tagged as being superior.
People, you are absolutely right. You have pointed out one of the flaws.
So why is that, why is that not challenged more regularly at who in the, who in the district can carry forward that, that idea? I assume that somewhere, somebody decided that this was perhaps in order to be punitive, which I think, you know, we're going to speak to in other ways, to tag, to tag a district with their lowest performing school and say, "You may be doing really wonderfully well, but if you have one school that's not doing well, we're going to color your whole district with a lower number than, you know, an average." It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I think in the eyes of the public, it communicates something that's not accurate.
Agreed.
And was it at one time done that way for, so that those particular schools could get the assistance?
That's right.
And then that led me to my question, whether to get assistance?
Right. So, I mean, the way, the reason it makes sense sort of on a philosophical level is that, like, in this case, our middle schools are Level 3 school, right? But our middle school gets students from our elementary schools, right? And so the, the idea of making it the entire district, and I'm not saying I agree with this idea, I'm just saying this is, this is a way to look at it, that it makes sense, is that because of the assistance we're getting as a district, we can use those resources even in our Level 1 elementary schools, so the students that are being sent up to our middle school are better prepared for a middle school education. And so there is some logic to coloring the entire district in that lower number, but I agree with you, it's flawed.
Well, and in a world where we're not thinking of education through competition models, it doesn't matter if these, if these ratings are designed to then produce assistance programs at the state that improve our schools, then these aren't like scarlet letters or something.
Right.
But because we're now in this place where we're both having the accountability to the state and also trying to prove to our public that our schools-
Right.
-are adequate when faced with competition.
Yep.
Yeah, there's that distinction.
That is, it's really-
But you go to Realtor.com-
Right.
And the line is, you know, "What's the rating of the school district?" And they would, I imagine under some algorithms, just use the convenient, objective-
Yeah.
-number issued by the state. And so a, a new family moving into the valley looks at five communities and says, "Well, there's a Level 3 academic community," and, and makes a decision about where to buy a home-
Yeah.
-and, and other things. It just seems to me to be-
Misleading.
There's got to be, there's got to be a way to accomplish the mission of acquiring the, the support-
Right.
-without having to suffer the, suffer the other, the other consequences.
So Julianne, just back to-
Yeah.
Could I borrow your pen?
Mayor Karen's comment.
Uh-huh.
So what exactly do we get for additional assistance?
Sure. Do you want me to answer that now, or do you want me to wait until the slide that answers that?
Oh, okay.
For curiosity.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. It's like, it's in there. I can jump ahead to it.
No, 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 that's fine.
If you want to just keep going. Okay. When we get to that, I promise I will point it out and ask for any additional questions on it. Okay. All right. So the next slide is the school percentile. So when we're talking about levels 1 through 5, levels 1 and 2 are all assigned, are assigned to all schools that hit the 20th percentile and above. So remember, there are those two measures. There's the growth and achievement measure, and then there's the as compared to like schools measure. The as compared to like school, schools measure is the percentile. So any school that's in the 20th or above percentile is going to be a Level 1 or 2 school. Any school that's in the Level 19th or below percentile is 3, 4, or 5. Within those two groupings of the above 20 percentiles and the below 20 percentiles, what tags you as either Level 1 or 2 in the above 20th, or in the 3, 4, or 5 below 20th, is how fast your students are growing. So the, so I'm going to start using the acronyms. The PPI is what tells us if you are 1 or 2 above the 20th percentile, and the PPI tells us if we're 3, 4, or 5 in the below 20th percentile. So what we know about our schools is that our three middle schools and our high school are all above the 20th percentile. And again, if you want to know the exact percentiles, they're all on school and district profiles.
The elementary schools.
The elementary schools. And if you want to know any of that data, it's on the school district profiles. If you, so we know that they are in Level 1 because they are above the 20th percentile and because they have high growth of students. So they've gotten both of those measures under control. In Whitebrook, our Level 3 school, we are in the 16th percentile. That one I know by heart. We're in 16th percentile at Whitebrook, but we're Level 3, not 4 or 5, because our growth is still high. So, and you'll see later in the Whitebrook slide, our students are all improving, but they're all, the state terminology is improving below the target. So we have high growth across the board. It's our percentiles that put us either in Level 1 or 2, but we don't have any Level 2s this year, or Level 3, 4, or 5. So that's the, that's the big news on the percentile. The next slide is the PPI. And so that, that slide just goes into more detail about what indicators go into the PPI. So for the, for elementary schools, there are five core indicators. The ELA scores, math scores, science scores, and then SGP, which is student growth percentile in both math and ELA. Not in science, because they don't take science every year, and so you can't measure growth. Okay, so those are the five indicators in our elementary and our middle schools. In high school, they add two more indicators to the PPI, the annual dropout rate, and then the cohort graduation rate. So we do very well in all of those, which is why we're a Level 1 high school. You can also get extra credit in your PPI, and in all three of our elementary schools and our high school, we did get extra credit. And the extra credit comes in from both pulling kids up out of the warning or needs improvement categories and pushing kids up into the advanced category. And we did all of those things in this past year. We both pulled kids up, and we also pushed kids higher. So kids who used to be proficient are now advanced, which I think is really marks something that's, that's strong about our district, that we're not just paying attention to the kids who need that intervention because there needs improvement or failing or warning, but we're also really targeting the kids that need to be pushed up into those upper levels, which is really exciting.
It's huge.
It's huge. We get a lot of extra credit for that, so that was good. We also, we also get extra credit because we demonstrated some great growth for our English language learner students on the access test. That was also really good news. And we also re-engaged dropouts, which means that kids who dropped out of school were then brought back into our district. And as long as you have at least two kids do that in a school year, you get extra credit for that. And East Hampton High School did that in last year, so.
I think we need to send some praise towards our high school principals, both our former high school principal and our current high school principal, because they've worked very hard to do that, to make sure that no students drop out, or if there are dropouts, to re-engage them. They've done an excellent job with that.
Yeah, that's all good news. All right, so the next graph shows, this is the reducing proficiency gaps by half graph. So what this shows is, in 2011, our CPI, so Composite Performance Index, which is, which is, it's the score kids got on the test. That's the best concise way to say it. And it's one of the indicators in the PPI. And so in 2011, our CPI was 76. To reduce by half means that by 2017, so this year of testing, we should be up to 88. Last year's testing, last year's testing, we were at 77.2, meaning we are improving. We've been steadily improving, just not as fast as the state would like us to.
So is that, is that just an arbitrary determination? What's the educational rationale behind saying, "Reduce it by half in five years"? Other than that it's convenient math, and it sounds good-
Convenient math.
-on the political spectrum. But there's no, there's no educational rationale for that?
I mean, the educational rationale, I'll, I'll show you in another graph. I think that there's some educational rationale around, no, I can't even. I was gonna-
I mean, beyond saying that we want, beyond saying that we want our students to do better, and I don't know of a teacher around who isn't trying to reduce the gap between their strongest performing students and the students who aren't performing well, to, to say to a district that, that is improving and reducing that gap, I mean, I guess we'd love to see it go to 100.
Right. And I think, so the plan is, from the state's perspective, is to continue reducing by half. So what I was going to say, there's, there's a little bit of logic here around when No Child Left Behind was passed, a lot of the pushback on it was that it required 100% proficiency, and a lot of educators thought that was crazy. That's not, it's not rational to think of that. And so this was sort of the compromise of that. We don't have to get 100%, but we have to cut by half every five years. And so wherever we are at the end of this testing year, our next goal will be to cut whatever that is by half to 100. So, right, everyone wants to continue improving, but we also want to be just rational about-
And the standard by which that gap is made, we're assessing all those students from the upper to the lower end against the same standard.
Correct.
Not taking into account any distinguishing circumstances that would say that educationally would be appropriate to evaluate the academic progress and the academic development of different people differently, if they start out with different circumstances.
And that's why the student growth percentile is part of the formula, and it's not just around achievement, which I think is really important in the formula. It's not just, "Did you get a 75 on the test?" It's, "Did you get a 75 on the test, and on the last test you got a 45?" Right? That's growth. That's something we want to applaud. And so the state has given us a way with the SG, the student growth percentile, to applaud that, that growth, right? So, so there is a little bit of that, but it's both, which is why we have both the PPI and the percentile. The percentile is the, these are the numbers, and this is where you fall. The PPI is, this is how you've grown. So we are measured by both. Should I go to the next slide? No. All right, so now we're getting into just the, the actual schools' data. So Center and Peppin are both Level 1. They're, so with Center and Peppin, they're Level 1 because they were held harmless this year. And held harmless means that we elected as a district to, to try out PARC. And especially at Peppin, we also chose to do the PARC test on the computers to, and I think that this was, by the way, a very wise choice, because we are mandated to take MCAS, the Next Generation MCAS, on the computers in grades 4 and 8 this year. And it is excellent that our kids have had practice, and moreover, that our teachers and our schools have had practice administering these tests on the computer. We, we did a very detailed analysis of the data of the students who took the test on computers last year and compared it to both, so we, the two classrooms at Peppin took it on computers. We compared it to the third grade data, so the same students, how they achieved in third grade, and then how they achieved in fourth grade on the computers, as well as comparing it to the other fourth graders who took it with paper and pencil. And we found that there was no statistical difference in the students who took it paper and pencil versus the students who took it on computers. And there was no statistical difference between how the students performed in third grade and then in fourth grade. So the, we talked a lot at the fourth grade level of why that's true, and I think it's because, as a district, we've really made a push to have students have technology access in the classrooms. And so they've had that practice. They know how to use the computers. They know how to use their track pads on laptops. And so that's really good news for moving forward, that our students are already digitally literate in terms of taking this assessment. I think schools that didn't have that practice last year are in for a surprise this year, and they will not be held harmless next year. So that was something that was really good for us. Regardless of being held harmless, our CPI was high enough that we would have been Level 1 anyway. I did that math, just to make sure that we still would have been there. We still would have been there, would have been fine. We're, we are still way above the 20th percentile in both schools. Student growth was great. So we were held harmless. We don't know exactly what the state would have told us, but we have reasonable assurance that that was what was happening. Literacy curriculum. Oh, and this is also, I also wanted to mention that we are in year three of implementing a new literacy curriculum, and we've seen a lot of growth in our literacy assessment data. For, for years now, the students have been outperforming in math in the elementary schools, and, and the math literacy gap is closing. So that's really good news. The next slide is Maple Elementary School, also a Level 1 school, which is amazing because they've jumped two levels in two years. And that means that both, they got out of being below the 20th percentile, and they have very fast growth in their students. So should be very proud of this little school. We did get a lot of extra credit at Maple specifically for pushing kids into the advanced level from the proficient level. So some good things are happening there. They have been using a lot of inclusive practices at Maple, so I think that that's, that's part of it, is that really helps improve teachers' instructional practices to have all students in your classrooms. And they've also been really putting an emphasis on their math curriculum and making sure that it's rigorous enough to meet the standards. Both, all of that's been happening within pilot programs where they've been very attentive to collecting data and making sure that they're doing what works for students. And that will continue to happen. So that next graph, East Hampton Elementary Schools, I'm sorry, it's very small. What I really wanted to point out to you is that those blue bars are the all students for each school and at each content level. And the, the state target for CPI is 75. And so if you look at that blue bar across the board, both ELA and math, we're hitting 75 and above. The red bar is that high needs group of students, and we are closing, especially at Maple, if you look at those first two, yeah, we're really closing the achievement gap there with our, with our high needs students. And we're working on it everywhere else. At Peppin, again, even with the high needs subgroup, it's not statistically significant enough to give us data, which is why those bars are missing from the, the graph.
So it's because there are too few students that the, their scores are not put up for compared, and that's, is that also for the economically disadvantaged at Center?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. Yep. Yep, we just don't have quite enough. And, and this is only grades 3 and 4. If you looked at the whole school, we got plenty of kids, unfortunately, plenty of kids in those categories. in those categories. But if, since we're just looking at third and fourth grade, and since we're a small district, we just don't get the data, because it's not statistically significant. So this is one of those ways where we're a small district, we don't get as much data as the larger districts do for those subgroups. And so it's harder to analyze the data and then really do those targeted interventions.
And Jamie, can you talk a little bit more about inclusive practices and what this data shows us about Maple and, and, you know, our focus this year?
I will. What's coming up?
It's coming up.
It's coming up, yep.
Well, yeah, I, and I don't want to delay us too much, but I think, and I think it would be great to figure out how to emphasize the point, but when you look at the growth over the last two, well, first of all, I'll make a side note about inclusive practices at Maple. My, perhaps they went away for a period of time, but when my eldest son, 11 years ago, was entering the public school system, one of the things that struck us most powerfully about the experience in Maple and one of the reasons that we were most excited to have him attend Maple was how, you know, I still get teary-eyed at the class practices that I witnessed when we were observing before Cooper joined the school, and inclusion was at the heart of the practice in the classrooms that we saw. I, you know, on a, on a less personal and more sort of, I hope, objective analysis, the data exists that shows that in the school where we have a significantly enough, large enough percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged or who have high needs, that that's where we're seeing an increase in two levels over two years.
Yes.
So again, for all those folks out there who are considering charge of school education or school choice for their child.
Yeah.
Even with the most challenging students.
Such a good point.
Our elementary schools do a phenomenal job, right? This data, this data comes from DESI, right? This is not data that we've made.
No, no.
So much of the challenge with East Hampton, I continue to believe, is that, that, that people, and maybe this is curb appeal of the buildings or whatever it is, but won't look through to say, what would be the real experience of my child in this system? I mean, the achievement gaps of all students overall are Level 1, and the gaps between the, the school overall and the high-needs and the economically disadvantaged students are, are narrow and are getting narrower.
Correct.
Right? The overall performance is going up.
Yep.
In ELA and math.
Uh huh.
And the gap is going down.
Yes.
So you really have a rising tide lifting all boats.
I.
In the most challenging demographic school population that we have in East Hampton.
Yep. I've, I've used that metaphor quite a bit in professional development this year to, to sort of sell everyone on inclusive practices. It's true, the rising tide. I mean, it's, the instructional practices that you learn through inclusive practices help all students. That's just the bottom line, yeah. So some other things we've done in all of our elementary schools, we have hired some really excellent new Title I Reading Recovery teachers this year. They're at Center and Peppin, and they're just, they're just wonderful teachers, and they're really pushing those kids, really, the kids are getting a double dose of literacy every day, and it's really, it's good news. We've also increased the number of teachers that we have trained at the elementary level in AVMR, which is the Math Recovery Corollary to Reading Recovery. And so that's been really strong in our schools as well. We have a literacy coach for our elementary schools who is providing professional development in the classroom to teachers during their literacy blocks, which is really pushing their practice to become more rigorous. And as a district, we've really taken an approach altogether in inclusive practices and social-emotional behavioral skills. It's coming from, you know, our leadership team is really engaged in this work, and it just seems, everyone is, I mean, again, it's the rising, it's the rising tide. Couldn't have said it better myself. And we've also expanded our Quest program, which is our Talent Setting Gifted program, to push those upper-level kids, push more of them out of proficient into advanced. And so we hadn't been including our third graders in that program for a couple of years. We've gotten back in there, they are meeting the expectations, and it's really, it's very important work. All right, so on to White Brook. So we know White Brook is our Level 3 school, meaning that they need technical assistance, and this is where I'm going to tell you what we get for being Level 3. We get assistance from a group, from a part of DESI called the District and School Assistance Center, DSAK. And DSAK gives us both manpower and financial assistance. So we have a number of specialists who are trained in both math recovery and reading recovery who work with us. And we also get a grant that is supposed to help us with implement what the department refers to as turnaround practices. So in White Brook this year, we are using those turnaround practices. We're implementing instructional rounds, which is a peer observation model for gathering data about instructional practices in a school.
If I could just interject here, that's exactly what the high school put into place a number of years ago and brought them up from Level 3 to Level 1.
That's right. And it's even the same people who are working with us.
Really?
Yeah. It's great. The, the DSAK crew has not changed in that number of years. So we've got the same people working with us to really craft that, that process, yeah. So that's really great. And again, I just want to emphasize about White Brook and our level there, I'm sure you all know this, but the elementary schools have, you know, pre-K to four or K to four, depending on which one you're looking at, which means they have two tested grades. So if children are in need of interventions, we're only looking at two grades to provide those interventions. At the high school, they only have one tested grade, so providing those interventions is so easy, because you can really target in on those top graders. White Brook tests every single grade, and two of those grades have three assessments. It's just, it's massive testing. And so for all four of those grades to get the intervention assistance that they need, whether you're talking about money or people or just the schedule, it is very difficult to provide intervention, you know, for so many students at the same time, in the same year, in the same building. So I just want to emphasize that that is, that is a challenge for us, and DSAK is certainly helping us with it, but it's a challenge to have four tested grades, which is why that five-to-eight grade span is actually really unusual in the Commonwealth. It's usually.
I was just gonna ask you that.
Yeah.
So you had said, again, the five-to-eight span is very difficult for us to parallel with many.
Yes.
And so this is probably one of the most really obvious difficulties of that setup.
I think so, yes, absolutely. Most schools do run that K to five grade span, which means you have three tested grades in elementary, three tested grades in the middle school, you still have that one tested grade in high school. They have SATs and AP and everything, so they're fine.
So one of the arguments, and, and maybe this is where you're going, Karen, is if we restructured the classes that were housed in the same building, because the other piece of this Level 1, Level 2, Level 3 silliness with the labeling is the, the fact that the way your students are divided up by buildings can alter the number.
Yeah.
You could have the exact same students performing exactly the same way.
Correct.
So no material difference in the educational experience or performance of any child in the district, but house them differently.
Yep.
And the levels that you would be at could conceivably be different.
Yes.
So we may not be able to change the system, but this is an argument for K through A in one building.
We believe it is, yes.
Right?
I believe it is.
Right? K through A in one building.
Yes.
Because then when you, then when you do the average, the number that it's closest to is 1.
Yeah.
And, and the design that we're talking about is having grade-level clusters and bringing the fifth grade back into the cluster with K to four.
Exactly. And there's been a lot of discussion on all our workshops, it has centered on that, especially what you were saying, the grade five, going back into elementary and section now differently.
And I think if you talk to any of the grade five teachers, you know, their perception is, these kids are still elementary school children. I mean, they are.
And there's no need to, to rush. One of the things in a letter that we're gonna look at later is that a number of the schools internationally that perform well, if you're interested in performing well on standardized tests, why don't you look at schools that perform well on international tests? They don't even start in some of the countries in regular school until they're set on the theory that kids have important developmental things that, that they can be experiencing outside formal classwork. So that this, this rush to convert people into, into middle school and grade five.
Let's see, is there anything else there? We did, I mean, so all those things said about, about White Brook, I do want to note that there was a lot of good news in the White Brook data. Again, the students were improving. We didn't see declines in our subgroups. We saw improvement in our, in our growth. So that's, that's all fantastic news. Let's see. So let's talk a little bit about the, well, let me, okay, let me go to the high school, and then I'm gonna come back to inclusive practices. So the high school, Level 1, just, it's just the assessment data from that 10th grade graduation requirements in ELA, Math and Science. I know that you've talked a little bit or heard a little bit about the complex tasks work that they're working on in their cycle of inquiry and their, in their professional learning communities. And I think we'll, you'll hear more about that at a future school committee meeting. They've also taken a really nice whole-school approach to growth mindset this year, which I think is incredibly valuable research and work, to the point that they have brought in a consultant who's not only worked with teachers on how to support growth mindset in the classroom and the school, but the consultant also worked with the students on what it means to work smarter, not harder. And that's, I think, really, really important work for them to be doing, especially our students who will be going off into colleges and careers.
Is this the work they did with Andrew Watson?
It is Andrew Watson's work, yes. Thank you.
Well, it's terrific. I saw, I had the, the fortune to go to East Hampton High School yesterday and observe a classroom and walked away, as I almost always do, with an idea about how to improve my own classroom teaching. And I, you can see the influence there of that, that approach.
Right. Well, and that's, I mean, that, what you just said is the idea around instructional rounds.
Right.
It's that you get more teachers into each other's classrooms. I mean, just in our first round of instructional rounds, the teachers were saying, oh, I really liked that thing he was doing in his classroom, I'm gonna start that tomorrow. I mean, it's just those little pieces that really, yeah, everyone, everyone improves. So it's all, all very good news. Yep. So the next slide is the, the theory of action that we're sort of working with as we talk about inclusive practices and how we're going to improve as a district. So this is our theory of action. If we use data-informed decision-making to provide interventions in inclusive classrooms for our students in need of flexible tiers of support and multiple means of learning, I'm gonna explain all of this language in a second, then all students will benefit and achievement will increase. So this is sort of putting together all of the pieces, so that our initiatives aren't siloed, but all together, we're all working towards one goal, which is incredibly important from the district perspective. So as started in the high school, we're using a cycle of inquiry, meaning that we look at the data, we decide on an intervention that we want to use, we implement it, we collect data along the way as we implement it, then we look back at that data, decide what our next intervention is gonna be, and we just keep moving around the cycle, so that we're continually improving, but only through that very close eye on data and the interventions that we put into place in the classroom. So that's something, as a district, all of our schools are working on. We have structured professional learning communities, PLCs, in every building now, and the administration, the principals, and their teacher leaders are all working very hard to maintain that structure and have it be a useful time for teachers to come together and share their practice, but then also look at the data and decide how to improve their practice. So that's our cycle of inquiry. Some of the ways that we're using DESI initiatives to help that, this is where I'm gonna talk about inclusive practices. So DESI last year released the Inclusive Practices Guidebook. The website, I've included just that screenshot there for you, so you can see how many tools they've given us to really help with this idea of all students belong in the classroom with highly, okay, they've stopped using the term highly qualified, with high-quality instructors giving high-quality instruction. That's what I'm trying to say. And so interventions are, are not meant to be, a student is pulled out of the classroom during literacy and given a totally separate literacy curriculum, right? Literacy is the, the intervention for, for literacy is meant to be in keeping with the content that is happening in the general education classroom. So you're not, you're not separating the skills from the content. Skills have to be embedded in meaningful content in order for students to improve. And so that's how we are structuring at the elementary school, and, and Maple certainly has been very progressive in this, in doing this structure, of making sure that students are getting a double dose of both content and skill instruction that's embedded in the meaningful work that they're doing in their classrooms. So we, as a leadership team, we're working with a consultant from the collaborative, Sharon Jones. She's gonna help us in what this means to, to get better at inclusive practices. We're already using it mostly around the district, but a little professional development never hurt.
And I think what she's doing is doing an analysis for us. She's looking at our classrooms, and then she'll give us feedback on where she sees inclusive practices and then suggestions for how to bring them in where we're not seeing them.
Yeah. The technical term for what she's doing is called, it's called an industry inventory. And so she'll give us a comprehensive look at how we're using inclusive practices across the district, which will be really helpful in then implementing the next slide, the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. And I, I've given you some graphics there. I'm gonna, just a really brief on what tiered support looks like. I do want to say that it applies to both academics and behavior. So both our social-emotional behavioral learning and our academic content and skill learning can both be approached through this structure of tiered systems. Tier 1 is where you'd find your general education students mostly, they need few supports in the classroom, they can mostly access the content and the skills without more support, without more scaffolding. Tier 2 is interventions that happen in the classroom with the entire student body, but are a little bit more targeted. So that might be things like a teacher having a small group who haven't, you know, they, she's given a pre-test, notice that there are some kids who are a little further behind than other kids on a particular skill. She does the whole class instruction, and then she may pull that small group of kids to give them a little extra instruction, or maybe to reteach a concept, right? But it's all happening in the general education classroom. Tier 3 is then generally our special education, or if you're looking at the social-emotional skills, it might be our behavior teachers, really looking at what specialized instruction needs to be given to those students. So that's how we're looking at sort of everything we're doing right now. Everything should be in that inclusive classroom of tier 1 learning, but we're training our teachers to get better at the tier 2 intervention that can happen right in the classroom. And then we're improving communication and support for those tier 3 interventions that really should be happening through special education. And then in the next slide, that also applies to social-emotional learning. Again, last year, the Department of Ed came out with this really nice package of what does social-emotional learning look like, why is it so important, how does it impact academic learning? And so that's another piece that we're really looking at. You can see those five skills there. If you know any elementary school kids, think about how they, how they're doing on those five skills. I think self-awareness is a little difficult for most of them, self-management, hard for a lot of adults. So five articulated skills of where we really need to be supporting our students. The next slide is the Universal Design for Learning. This is a way of looking at, making sure, we used to call it, so everything old is new again, right? We used to call this, making sure that we were accessing multiple intelligences in our classrooms, how our gardeners work. Now we call it Universal Design for Learning. It's all the same idea around kids access content and skills in lots of different ways, visually, spatially, kinesthetically. We've got all of these ways that our brains work. They all work uniquely, which is extraordinary, but a teacher still has to stand in front of 20-something students and teach a lesson. So if that teacher can make sure that she is providing multiple means of representation, providing multiple means of action and expression, and providing multiple means of engagement, then she's going to get more kids into that lesson and be able to improve their, their understandings. So that's a, a design we're also looking at. So to come back to the theory of action, all of those pieces fit into the big, long sentence. We're going to use data. We're going to use data-informed decision-making, which is our cycle of inquiry, to provide interventions in inclusive classrooms, which is guided by the work of the Inclusive Practices Guidebook, for our students in need of flexible tiers of support, which is our tiered system of support, and multiple means of learning, which is our universal design for learning. Then all students will benefit and achievement will increase. So that's where we are as a district, our accountability and our, our plans for the future. And if you have any questions, please definitely call me, email me. I have lots of time to, I don't have lots of time. But I do, as Nancy knows, I love going over the raw data.
Very obvious.
You think?
The excitement shows.
Okay.
Extremely good information.
Thank you. It wasn't too much.
Very helpful, no, very, very helpful.
I, I love the enthusiasm. And you can always tell when someone wants to review.
I do, I do, I do. Thank you.
Are there, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Are there punitive consequences for the leveling?
Only if you're level four or five over, so you may know about Holyoke.
Yes.
Yes. So Holyoke went into receivership after being a level-five school for over three years.
Okay.
So, yes, but we're not even close to that.
Right. Okay, so it is just really a matter of perception?
Yeah. At this point, it's, it's definitely perception and we get the extra money. I don't know if Holyoke was actually in for three years, I just realized that that's...
It was a number of years.
It was a number of years. Yeah. So if you're a number of years in levels four or five, then the, the only way to get into levels four and five is that the Board of Ed actually has to take action on the district.
Okay.
So that's what happened with Holyoke. They took action, went into receivership. We, we just don't, I mean, even for level three, we're in the 16th percentile, so we're only four percentile points away from being a level-one or two school.
Sure.
And we keep making growth, so long as you're continuing to make growth.
Yeah. There's nothing that's figured out about it.
Excellent.
Yep.
I think this is really impressive. Really, all of this information is so impressive.
Well, I, I mean, our students and our teachers deserve a lot of credit, and our principals, our building principals are fantastic.
And Julianne has done a wonderful job this year, coming on new to the position, working with our teachers, working with our administrators, and I think probably Jill can attest to that. She's formed a great partnership with the middle school, and they're making lots of gains in lots of positive ways.
Excellent.
And she does love to do research. When I was doing the ed plan for the building project, I wanted some research on class size and its impact on learning for, for students. And so I think within a few minutes, should I just pull that up for me? And we were able to plug it into the...
One, good.
Excellent.
Thank you, Julianne.
Yes, thank you very, very much.
My pleasure. We're grateful to have you in this role.
Yeah.
Happy to be here.
And you don't need to say it.
I don't need to say it?
She does have young children.
Oh, excuse us.
I'm due, I'm due.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that was great. Moving on to more...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. And please do contact me if any questions.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
So, Deb, I'd like to have us, if we can reverse the order and do the minutes, and next, are we going, going to matters for action?
Yes, we are.
And only ask that we make a note that we'll postpone actually signing a physical copy of the minutes until later. Everybody has an electronic copy, I hope?
We don't have to sign it for the minutes? We don't need to sign it?
Oh, okay. I thought it would be a copy.
Oh, you don't need to sign it.
I have to sign it. Secretary has to sign the minutes, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
So what I, I'm just making the note in advance that if you want, we can postpone the vote on the November 29 meeting because I don't have a physical copy of the minutes. If someone does...
I do. I do too.
Great, okay. True, true. That's great.
They're yours.
I have an electronic copy. Great, okay.
Pardon.
Then we're fine. Yep. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so, um, you want to, did you want to address that first?
So then I would move that we approve the, I would move that we approve the minutes from November 29, 2016.
Second. There's been a motion to approve the minutes from November 29, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, can we move to warrants and payroll?
Yes.
Can you come sit down here?
Yes. Yeah. Yes, I would agree. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
You sure?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Warrants and payroll.
Warrants and payroll. Here we go. Pink sheet. I got it. Okay. I move to approve the school payroll dated 8 December 2016 in the amount of $486,728.29.
There's been a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated December 8, 2016 in the amount of $486,728.29. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 8 December 2016 in the amount of $291,078.00.
There's been a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December 8, 2016 in the amount of $291,078.00. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, next pink sheet. Those, if you want, those are dates. Email already. Right. So I actually probably should keep them and have Deb sign them. Okay, Deb, we'll have you sign these next, after. Okay, so that all goes with that and with that sheet. Okay, next up. I move to approve the school payroll dated December 22, 2016 in the amount of $496,049.69.
There's been a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated December 22, 2016 in the amount of $496,049.69. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for the payment dated 22 December 2016 in the amount of $328,091.96.
Did I hear Liz's second? Thank you. There's been a motion, it's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated December 22, 2016 in the amount of $328,091.96. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Right, and that will need the signatures of everyone. We then have a budget transfer request for salary in the amount, sorry. Just trying to be efficient. Oh, oh, actually, and it's here too, I don't know why I'm doing that. So the motion is to transfer, sorry, it's for a budget transfer request submitted by Dale Doran on the 30th of November, 2016 in the amount of $23,356, and this is to cover a new PK teacher.
Is there a second? Can we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded, to approve a budget transfer request to allow for teachers' professional salary in the amount of $23,356 for a new PK teacher, pre-K teacher. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And there is also a motion from, dated 15 December 2016, from Allison Rabello, Center Peppin principal, regarding school choice openings, and this is a request for a school choice slot, school of choice slot, to be opened in grade three at Center Peppin. There is a third-grade student whose family has moved out of the district but would like to remain in our school system. So I move that we approve this school of choice slot so that this third grader can remain in our school system.
Second. There's a motion that's been seconded to approve the school choice opening request by Allison Rabello for grade three at Center Peppin. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
And...
We are not going to adjourn.
We're going to move into a work session.
We're going to move into a work session.
And we will need additional signatures on the warrants that we just approved. So you need to sign these.
Sign these?
Actually, you know what? Can you sign these and then I'll shepherd them along, these first two. None of those have been signed in advance.
All of these. Do we continue recording for our work session? I'm thinking we probably should because it's a public meeting.
And I apologize, I don't like to text during meetings, but I had a family matter that came up.
All right. And with regard to the work session, I was just thinking it'll be incredibly boring for people, anybody watching, but...
Right, so you sign these now?
No, I have not.
I don't know.
I've signed these.
Oh, okay. So these are done?
Well, actually, maybe you want to just follow, she stays. I don't remember whether she stays, once, you know, we've moved into it.
I think there was a duplicate here, but we signed it anyway.
Usually she does. If she's available, she does.
Do you, um, so I'm going to put everything under the pink sheet that goes together as best as I can tell. I lost track of one.
I didn't look at it.
No, that's okay. I think we've got, I think we've got two approvals of one, but that's fine. Better two than none. Okay, so we got that. So those, those all go together as one packet, and they're signed and ready. This group needs additional signatures from the mayor and, yeah, we need two more signatures on each of these. Okay, and then this does have the signed, um, this is the signed copies of the minutes. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot. I should always print that out. And then I, we approved this, but I don't think I have to sign it anywhere. This was a budget transfer request, but I don't believe it requires signature. I think the vote allows it to be processed. Okay? So I think that's all the important, thank you for stepping in.
Okay, so the purpose of this work session is to continue some of the work we've been doing and finalize some of the work we've been doing on the documents that we wanted to create for various purposes. And the first thing that we should probably address is the letter to the City Council that we're presenting tomorrow. And Marissa provided final edits to that letter. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read it, or we're down to the foremost. But I'll start off by saying I think it looks great, and I would be in favor of proceeding with it as presented.
I agree.
You're agreeing. Have you had a chance to look at it, Mayor Kiran?
Are you talking about the letter that you read earlier?
No, this is the letter that we're, we're planning to read to the City Council tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, so...
So what our plan was, Marissa provided some final edits for our meeting tonight, and so we just wanted to be sure that we were all in agreement. And actually, we were going to vote on it. I think we should vote on it.
Yep, I think we do. We vote to have it.
Right.
We've alerted them that, of the general sentiment. This specific letter...
Approves this letter as an official voice of the school.
So I'm going to stay from it, just to tell you how to talk, if you, because we do technically vote on it, I'm staying from it. So I wasn't involved in the work we was open to, and I'm also already involved on the other end, in the ordinance subcommittee, already on to meetings there, so I don't have any objections to it, but I don't feel that, that, you know, I feel that I'm going to stay from it.
Okay, so does that work for a vote for us? If there are one abstention and three in favor, that's okay?
Yes.
Right, because the abstention, the abstention counts as a, for purposes of the forum.
Okay. All right, then, do we have a motion to approve?
Yep, motion to approve the, the letter as written and for reading at tomorrow evening's City Council meeting.
Second. All those in favor? Three, yes, one abstention. Very good. Thank you very much, Marissa. Appreciate that.
It's a small, small change.
Okay. Oh, just to confirm, is it okay if I read this meeting tomorrow, read this slide tomorrow? And is anyone else planning to attend? I'm just curious.
I hope so.
You have to want to attend. I was serious.
She, yeah. She won't either.
Yeah, I hope to be there.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I'll be present.
Okay. So thank you again, Marissa and Peter, for all your help with that. Okay, next, we wanted to discuss these documents that Peter and Marissa, Peter took a first crack at, Marissa has done some additional work on.
So I have a procedural question before we go any further. Given how few the people are in the room, and given that we don't face, as we did with the two pre, private, previous letters, the one that we read during the formal meeting and the one that we just endorsed, both of which I think we've had more time, I think this is terrific. I would be happy to endorse this tonight. I've already thanked Marissa for making a good letter, what I think is a great letter. I, I'm only interested, and I suppose we could vote on it tonight, the three of us, I would simply ask that we revote on it when the mayor has had time, because this is, this is a letter that, that doesn't involve work that the mayor has done elsewhere. And the other members, I would, I, I would encourage the, the committee to, to, to work for a seven-zero letter, a seven-zero vote in favor of the letter.
Right.
At our January meeting. I'm happy to vote tonight, three with an abstention, but...
No, that'll give you two.
And that makes sense to have everyone on board.
And again, it's terrific.
And the timing is not, you know, obesence fair. We can take our time with this.
And the timeliness of this, and I realize I don't expect anyone to look at it, but I, and I forgot to let you know that it's literally three minutes, but I tried to send an email to everyone on the committee today that included a clip from this morning's marketplace. And, and the audio clip, I think, only runs about four or five minutes, but makes a powerful argument consistent with what we're trying to describe in this letter. And it suggests that I think this topic is going to remain in the forefront of people's attention, and so I think it will, you know, we won't be doing any harm by returning to it in 2017.
Oh, one thing I wanted to ask, because I had a meeting with my colleague superintendents last Friday at the collaborative, and I was talking to them about this, and they were very interested in seeing it.
Oh, great.
And so I don't know whether you want to wait until we finalize it or just sending them a draft for them to see the progress that we've made, but they were, they're very pleased that you all were doing this.
I think we should wait till we have something finalized before Sharon, don't you think?
Well, I, I actually think a draft is good because, you know, a lot of times, they're not, you know, they're not going to want a copy of her paper anyway, but it gives them the ideas and like a lot of the bullet points.
Well, that's actually something that I would...
And we could always send them a copy of our finalized too, you know, email that to them, but that could give them a little, little...
I'd be interested to know from your experience and yours, Nancy, whether, like, sort of the mechanisms of really getting a bunch of people to gather behind a letter like this, like, it, does it make more sense to, in the same way that we did for the question two resolution where Andover gave us an example and then districts made a little bit tweaks but adopted it independently as opposed to actually trying to gather a single document that has everybody's name to it?
So very, very...
And that's an argument in favor of, of sharing the draft, because if another superintendent and school committee share the same general sentiment but want to emphasize a different point, you know, I was struck this morning by that news because one of the key reference points they made when talking about the current state of charter schools is that they pointed to the evidence in Massachusetts and the question two vote. So I think that anything that we do that adds into the ideas, in the end, you know, I, from my perspective, I'm interested in people endorsing the importance of treating public education as a community good. And, and if other folks can come up with additional or more effective ways of, of expressing it, more power to them and to us. And then we can always affirm our particular letter in January and add to what I hope will be a chorus of people communicating with Governor Baker that he should reconsider his position. And maybe the extreme nature of the current nominee for Secretary of Education would highlight to Governor Baker where we're headed. You know, he may have thought in, well, in Massachusetts, where, you know, most of the schools are doing pretty well and education seems to be in good shape, what would be the harm in adding 12 more schools, except that the voter said, think again. Once he hears what, what... Once he hears what Secretary, what do you call it, elect, or Secretary designate for education thinks about giving money to for-profit and religious schools for public money for education, I think he might reconsider his position.
Well, my experience with the charter movement and the energy around the ballot question was that, you know, my colleagues did share pieces with me, and we shared with each other, and I think in some ways that sort of gets the snowball rolling and gives energy behind it.
And there's the power of numbers.
I guess, but we could do all of that, but I guess what I would just, I would feel more comfortable with is if we could have the larger group be in agreement. I mean, I think we're probably all in agreement that it would work as is. But I guess as a matter of process, I just feel more comfortable since it's not, we're not under the gun with a deadline and a critical time crunch here, that we have the whole group agree on this and that we outline a strategy and a plan, who we want to share the document with, and we just outline a timeline and a plan for where it's going to go and what our strategy is. Is our strategy, you know, or maybe we have several different strategies depending on the group. But I guess I'd rather do that than release this at this time, kind of willy-nilly. I'd really rather, like, map out, at least for now, this is step one, this is our thinking in terms of our plan. And maybe that will be revised as things move forward. But I guess I'd feel better about that being a little bit more deliberate about it.
Well, I think a lot of discussion too would be good, because what you were talking about later on, what you were talking about earlier, you're talking about, what you were talking about earlier, is very common, and it does have a lot of punch. Now, I know when in the state, whenever, like, they want to get the mass mayors to all sign on something, it's a thing, and they get it to every single mayor, and they list those.
Yeah.
And I was just looking, remember Chris Capruto?
Yep.
Because I know, I had signed onto a letter, and I think that's where he was going on that too. You know, trying to get, like, you know, the more, so, like, what you're talking about with the collaborative and the different communities, so that might really have a little bit more strength in it.
Yeah.
You know, and like you said, get a plan.
I'd like to put together a plan, for what groups we want to target, how best to target them to reach out to them.
And I'm a little concerned too, and I don't want to get off the, I'm not going to get off the issue, but I don't want to get off track, but I'm a little concerned too, because one of, one of your disaffairs, you know, on the funding end, was if that ballot question, you know, had gone through, it would, it would have completely eliminated any of our chances of, you know, redoing the way, you know, these funds are calculated, all of that. And, but, because I remember talking to Stan Rosenberg, and he said, you know, that ballot question is really important for, like, you know, how many talked before, what, you know, why are you, you know, giving the funds here, and they go there, and, you know, all of that. Like, obviously, it costs us a lot of money, over a million dollars is a lot of money. And he had said, well, you better hope that, you know, it's favorable for the ballot question, because any chances of relooking at the way things are configured would be out the window. Well, okay, so now, you know, on our end, it was favorable on our end, so where does the relooking at things? That's not what I'm seeing here. This is just kind of the opposite, right? So the voters, I mean, the voters have spoken, and then this looks like just exactly the opposite of where we were headed and why we were so, you know, voting no. So I'd like to, you know, really like to, like you said, have a plan.
Yeah, I'd like to map out a plan, and I don't think a lot will be happening in different organizations in the next two weeks anyway.
We're meeting Christmas holiday.
Yeah.
And we're going to meet in January, early.
And I think your point of making sure that everybody gets to see it in person makes sense.
So, and I just, since we've mentioned that, I just wanted to remind folks, and I know that I was in the room and I know that it makes sense, but a reminder that starting in 2017, we're shifting our meeting night, correct?
We are?
Oh, I didn't know that, sorry about that.
Okay, maybe I'm convincing myself of something that I don't remember, but I just went back and looked at the announcement here that said our next meetings are the 12th and the 26th. Those are Thursdays in January.
Well, you know...
I remember that we moved the meetings to six o'clock on Tuesdays.
We had that conversation, because I thought you had a conference.
I did, I did, but I thought my understanding was that the, well, I mean, I do, but that, you know...
I thought that's changing the time resolved the problem.
Not only changing the time, especially when we leave it, when we finish at seven. Tonight I contributed, in fact, that we didn't, but I want to be able to contribute. So, I think, I just wanted to be sure that...
I think Sue may have just put that in based on something that was said a while ago.
Right, so we may, we may need to double just, let's just double check.
What is it that you want to do, though?
Well, I want to know what the rest of the committee want to do, because I thought everyone so far found the experiment with six o'clock to be working.
It's great for me.
It's fine.
And the Tuesday nights really work well for me, because I always think of those at school.
Is that, is the six, so the six is working for you as well?
It's fine.
But the night for you, for everybody too, the Tuesday?
Right, I moved my, I got my dorm, my dorm duty switched to Wednesday nights. I still have something on Tuesday nights, but I can, you know, there may be a couple of Tuesdays when I leave it. Seven, you know.
All right.
But I just wanted to check, because I was looking at this, and I thought, okay, we moved it to the Thursday.
I think they are true.
Yeah.
Remember, it's easy to look at the wrong calendar, she could have been looking at...
2016.
Exactly, it is so easy to look at.
So you're going to keep the meeting on Tuesday at six o'clock?
Yes.
Clock and...
Nancy, would you ask Sue to just send out a message with regard to confirming when our first meeting is in the new year?
That'd be great.
Date, time?
Yep.
Okay. So, okay, just to back up a little bit to...
Yes, in point, in fact, in January of this current year, Tuesday was the 12th and the 26th. So I suspect that it was just...
Is that a calendar issue?
False alarm, but we should get it corrected in the public record so that people know when we're going to meet.
Yeah, we're meeting the 10th.
We're meeting the 10th and the 17th, correct?
Perfect.
Nothing on the...
I lied, not the 17th, 24th, 10th and 24th, right?
That's not on there either. Right now, maybe they just set maybe that's the same.
Okay.
Okay, so our two main topics for the work session were the letter to the City Council, finalizing that, and these letters, which, just to confirm or recap, we're both in agreement that we like them as they are?
I think we're, I think, yeah, I think we're in good, good shape, I think they're terrific.
Thank you. And we'll pick up that conversation, let's also plan to add a work session tacked on to the next meeting so that we can continue that discussion about these letters and a action plan?
Okay.
And, does that cover everything?
I guess I have a quick question, and I feel about announcing it. So, I know that there's four of them.
You might have duplicate copies.
No, hopefully not.
Oh, no, I know what you've got, there's three letters, and there's a cover letter for one of them. So, the letter that we're addressing, right, we've got, one letter is, one letter's done and is going to be presented tomorrow night, that's the letter on the marijuana regulation.
That's the city council.
Right, going to the City Council. Another letter was the reaffirmation statement that we made tonight in the meeting.
No, that's...
Right, and then there's two documents related to the third letter. There's the revised draft of the letter itself, and this is the introduction of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
A lot of letters this time.
Okay, so I think we've covered everything we need to cover for this evening, all right? All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?